I just turned on the.
Hey, Dan.
Pretty good, are you?
Am I dressed in appropriately?
Nope.
Okay. Am I late?
No, she's not.
Okay, we'll start the special city council meeting for June 8, 2021. Roll call and order. Council members Molly Ryan is excused, Mary Bailey here, Dan Rettigel, Tom Guard here, Mayor Doug Ante here. We will do the pledge allegiance. So if you can please stand if possible and be appreciated.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And we can start with citizens' comments. We have some out there that would like to come forward, state your name, and speak loud. Would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Mayor Hanky, council. Um, citizens, my name is Matthew Marion. I live by Houston Street in the west side. I have properties up in the southeast side, 930, 920, and 920 and a half Red Wing Avenue. I've been hearing about this for about a year and some individuals riding ATVs. I want to make one thing perfectly clear. I own two ATVs. I'm pro ATV. But it all comes down to applying the law. It all comes down to that. Um, they've been tormenting my property at 9:30. They've been going up and I, two years ago, I put down $6,000 worth of crushed asphalt. If it stays packed, it's an excellent, excellent top surface. About every third day we come up there and there's what they refer to as domes, went around and around. So sometime during the day, we got to go flatten it all out again. And I tell my employees to watch, watch when we're running the chimney around there. Well, I've got a call on Memorial Day afternoon from an individual that was in trailer court and said, Matt, these individuals just went through your new seating, which I think they got a new ditch, and I like the ditch. I like everything that's going on in the project. But again, the council knows I paid sixty-some thousand dollars worth of assessments. They spun through that. That broke the camel's back. I was very upset. I did get a hold of Officer Mitch and I left him at that. And Lee and Mitch responded back to me. Found out who it was. And Lee and Mitch explained to me, he's kind of a slow person. Just don't make sense, whatever. He said, what do you want to do? I said, he's willing to come up there. And I'll send right away to him. We'll wait until I am. I'll receive it and everything else. You've got a call. He never called me. Lee gave his number. I called, 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 but three messages. I finally got a hold of him on Sunday night. I said, let's go with Monday night. But Tuesday, never heard from him. And I said, go through my Wednesday. Otherwise, I said, I ain't going to press charges. I said, to the fullest extent. And then it was yesterday. Yesterday, I was up at my other shop and Lee came. I set off the alarm at my shop, silent alarm. Lee came up there. He says, your alarm's on. I said, yeah, it is. And I looked up there and they're up there spinning domes. My guard. This is 2:30 AM in the afternoon. They then proceeded to go down, drive down Randy Brockton's field of corn. It went down on the highway. And these people, we've seen, I've heard other people back there that live close to them. These two houses, there's the 300 block of Spring Street and the 400 block of Bullis. I've been told they're related. I've seen them move by Houston last, last weekend, 70 to 80 miles an hour. I've seen them following children, I say children, I'm guessing of the age five to seven years of age. No, no. In Minnesota, you have to have a valid driver's license to drive on county highways, township highways, and city streets. I found out yesterday, the one individual that's really been tormenting, he has a suspended license. We want, 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 kind of reading the story. And we got friends over there that, I got friends right back there in their blocks. They told me they'd lost just about all of their LP tags of their, of their barbecue trails. One individual told me he lost a lawnmower. He went down to Ason Canyon, bought it, almost $500. And he used it one time and lost it. If you're gonna, this person lives just a couple houses down from that. Can't prove it, but you know, lots like the duck, the quacks like the duck, chances are it's a duck. Yeah, I'm just upset. Lee has done stepped up to the plate. Yesterday, I found that legal are impounded. And the other one, you come down to the police station. And I understand he got it back and put it out of town. Okay, yeah. I'm just asking, Lee, you were not a friend. And Mitch is a good police officer, too. And I know you, this is, it's probably piddly, but they've gone down behind Scott Womack's, Scott and Lori Womack's. They go down onto the snowmobile trail, which is off limits. This might be DNR issue two, but they go down to the snowmobile trail that's called State Aid Trail. The state, the DNR gives the snowmobile club here in Canyon, which is very strong. Give them money to maintain that. Bob Clark was down there, a member of the snowmobile club for 35 years. He was down there a week before Saturday. And they were down there, coming around. And Bob looked at me, says, you're on private property. He told him to F off, period. Anything's going on, it's bothering a lot of people, a lot of people. And it seems to be the same two households and their families. And I don't know how, who's all involved in the household. Because when I went down there on Memorial Day, to talk to the mother, she told me to get F out of there. So I did. But evidently, they're beyond, beyond the law. And I think there's a lot of citizens in Canyon. And like I said, most important thing, one of them kids got killed. That's the worst. My, my little tolerance of my driver there, immaterial. Got no respect for public or private property, none. And I think if they come back, and I think they will, for some type of an ATV, they need to be talked to, make sure everything's legal and everything else. They gotta have it legally registered. They gotta have a legal driver's license. Like, yeah, I'm all about ATVs. No, I remember last year, there was over forty, fifty ATVs. All adults, young adults, they're up at the liquor store up there. I had here dealing, not forty-five thousand dollars to hold that. They respected the laws and they respected.
They didn't wreck anything on the way in.
They didn't wreck anything on the way in. So again, and I own some. But people are taking, they're getting frustrated with these two households. That's what I'm gonna call it, households. So I'm sorry to bring up this. I'm gonna make it short and stop with there. But it means a town and a police department just really stay on this. That's what I'm asking for.
Matt, you might mention to them as what took place on Monday night, last night, down by your place, when they stopped by.
That was, that was on Sunday night.
Sunday night, okay.
Down there in the nature center. They didn't drive down there, but there again, I mowed the nature center, Doug. Between me and Bob Clark, we mowed the nature center all the paths. And there's no more vehicles down there except for lawnmowers and they're mowing it. We've seen ATV trails down there, but they were down there just standing, looking at my house. My wife and I were sitting on our deck. They were from about twice the distance from you to me. We basically ignored them, but they sat down there for a half an hour.
Yeah.
Two people. I don't know if their husband or wife, but two people.
Would you mind saying what they commented to you?
They said they were burning off my shit.
Okay, thank you. I've also had a complaint. I will say this here, down in Riverside Park, as of Monday, Memorial Day, the same situation that you brought up, Matt, so. Anybody else have comments that they would like to say?
Here and council, thank you. I'm Todd Gressit. I'm the county commissioner for District Three. Just, I have nothing. I just wanted to stop in and say hi. If you have any questions or concerns for me, just please give me a call and let me know that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else that wishes to speak up? I was at time. We'll ask months more. Any citizens' comments? If not, we'll go on now. Do you adopt the agenda? We can do the consent agenda. Prove of the minutes and appointments and financial in one motion? If there is a motion on.
Are there any additions to the agenda? I'll move, we adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion that was made and second to adopt the agenda. Mark, there was anything else to add in there, was there?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Favor wins. By the way, I did not mention that, sorry, on my fault, city administrator Mark Bolson is here, city attorney Scott Raigs, city engineer Derek Olender, chief showlanders here, and assistant administrator Holly. So I messed up on that part. I'm sorry about that. Okay, we can go on then to presentations, public hearings.
I think we need to do the consent. I'll move, we adopt the consent agenda, including the minutes and appointments and financials.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion been made and second. I'm sorry about that. It realized. Do you approve of the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and against and favor wins? Now I believe we can go on. Presentations, public hearings, recognitions. Mayo Clinic. Would you like to come forward, please?
Mayor Hanky, I'm Mr. Bolson, City Council. Citizens of Canyon, I want to thank you, our behalf of the health system, for being here this evening to update you on our mobile health unit. As I get started, I want to introduce my colleagues that are here this evening. So first is Dr. Jennifer Moore, who's the regional chair of clinical practice for Southeast Minnesota. Dr. Trent Anderson is the physician lead for here in Southeast Minnesota, and his partner, Tyreke Bay, who is the operations manager. And then our public relations team, William Hocking, and Stephanie Olson. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. We are excited to have a mobile health unit that we are ready to bring to Canyon. We've been here previously to engage in conversation and have appreciated the opportunity to do dialogue and work towards a healthcare delivery in this community. So we have a quote here from our two leaders in the health system. The mobile clinic brings expanded high-quality healthcare services, including screenings, wellness, and enhanced care solutions to address the needs of patients in the local communities. So hopefully, you had an opportunity to see the mobile health units parked in front of CSF. So we wanted to extend our heartfelt thanks to them as well from all of us to their accessible area in front of their facility to park while we are here in Canyon. So just a couple of details about the unit. So it's 39 feet long, eight and a half feet wide. Interior height is seven feet, so Mark and I were comfortable walking through there. We have two exam rooms, concept laboratory, pharmacy services, a skydiving wall to expand that workspace, which really does aid in navigating the space in the unit. We have wheelchair lifts to ensure accessibility to all patients. We have blood draw chair that will allow both services to be extended to patients. Two medical-grade vaccine freezers to ensure that we can bring vaccines for care that is older here in the community. A medical-grade refrigerator, satellite communications system, a very spacious restroom, and a mobile hotspot. With the satellite communication system and the mobile hotspot, we're really excited to allow patients to come to access inside the unit and outside internet that is necessary to set other aspects of care. Patient online services, express care online, conditions you request, and deliver on the unit. So what can be done in this mobile health unit? So we're very happy that we've been primary here. We're gonna be able to provide chronic disease management and visits for patients with diabetes, digestive heart failure, other chronic conditions. Reproductive service, well, child exams, healthcare maintenance exams. We'll be able to evaluate acute illnesses and infections, provide immunizations, look at medication refills and medication follow-up exams for patients. See pediatric patients, prenatal visits, and I already did touch on wellness visits. And this will be with, with the healthcare provider on the unit as well as the ability to use virtual services on the unit to connect with a primary care provider or other specialty care that's not here on site. So with that, in terms of specialty care, allow patients to have their patient age peers checked virtually. They have specialty consults to visit with a cardiologist, a neurologist that might be in the health system or potentially at the Mayo Clinic. I think that of significant meetings is going to be work for management. So patients who have weak dam blood thinners for atrial fibrillation or other health conditions will be able to come here, have their blood checked, have that result sent to an academic regulation clinic, and then receive communication from that RN or pharmacist off-site directly to them with dosing adjustments. They don't need to go to another clinic to receive that, that care. The comparable. So what benefits do we bring to the community by having a mobile health clinic here? So the medical records that are, that are going to be utilized to help, the electronic health record is the same one that we use at other Mayo Clinic patients. So regardless of where you receive that here, if it's here, it's connected with a provider somewhere else, that is going to be in your electronic record and available to your care team or any care team that you interact with, you may have funded. And this will allow you to continue to receive efficient and effective care. Patients are going to be able to schedule appointments either through their patient online services. So you'll be able to log on to your account, whether that be on your mobile app, the website, and schedule that appointment. You'll also be able to call the main clinic appointment line to schedule that appointment as well. And, you know, this really allows us to build and expand on the virtual care that we developed during the pandemic. So, you know, pandemic, you know, really with all that that we had to work through and navigate, it did allow us to advance our digital platforms that will, that have allowed us to expand our care and really bring that here to the community. And by being able to access that through the non-mobile health unit, we will hopefully help bridge the gap with patients who don't have internet service, have inadequate internet service, will be able to come here, navigate that, that process of logging on and having that virtual medicine visit with their primary care provider or specialist. So it really, I think, will help bridge both the access to that, the adequate internet, as well as people who have concerns about the technology and how they interact with that to get their visit. So we're very excited about that. And then with that, I already mentioned to you, you know, being able to access your patient online services and then some of our asynchronous healthcare offerings through the express care online, where you can submit your symptoms, you can, you know, check your symptoms and help navigate what is recommended for your ankle pain, your back pain, and be able to do that through the mobile hotspot. We have a virtual tour that's available. So that is available on the website. The website's going to be updated tomorrow with the most updated information and maybe be able to access that and go through that, that virtual tour on your own. I don't know that we have that here this evening. We are excited to be able to have a twenty-two days a week, every other week. So it'll be Tuesdays and Thursdays, maybe at 4:00 PM every other week. So one week it's going to be in Southeast Minnesota, the next week it's going to be in Southwest Minnesota, offering similar services in, in those communities. We are excited to continue to partner and get feedback. We, again, we're very fortunate and thankful to be able to engage in a conversation that has gotten us here. So how can we continue to use this opportunity to leverage this technology to meet the healthcare needs of the patients attending in this surrounding area? So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, either myself or for any of our people on our team.
What, I'm sorry, what did, I know you said what, when it, when it will be here, but can you repeat that?
Yes, so. Well, exactly. I, I, I just thought I thought that. So it's Mondays and Wednesdays, and then eight to four. Tuesdays and Thursdays and Friday. And that's going to be every other week.
And that's every other week?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, I.
Yeah, so we. Yeah. Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
At what location?
So it, here in Canyon, the department of CSF.
Okay.
Yep, so Monday, June twenty. Yeah, so Monday, June twenty-eight. We've been working through these details, weaving up. So, yeah. This, there's been a fantastic team that's been working very hard behind the scenes. And this, this happening very quickly and we're happy to be rolling it out. So I appreciate having my, my backup here, so.
Can you give the citizens of Canyon and the surrounding area a guarantee that you're going to be here for the long term? And also about, are you going to do some advertising that you're going to be here?
Yeah, so Dr. Warren, you may go up to the first part and then we'll be up for a fifty-five second session.
Thank you.
You know, and I would echo that, you know, as the accepting position for all of Canyon. We've, we've worked hard to help with the solution and we are committed to it.
And I've spent a major concern.
As a family physician, I would say the same. I know I've worked closely with Travis, who is a provider here for, you know, many years and did a fantastic job. And he's excited about, you know, what this offering will bring to his patients and allow them to have, continue to have that connection and allow them to have those visits without having to necessarily go to Arizona. And we want to extend our sincere thank you and gratitude for partnering with us and engaging with us at the really end of this exciting time here for our.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mayo. Go on with engineering then. Matt Derrick, would you like to take over?
Yes. So first item on the agenda for engineering was update on the Red Wing Avenue project. Driven down that street, that's a big, massive block going on. I guess what they're preparing for right now is, we were expecting that maybe it would happen later in the month, but I'm all. actually shooting for the end of the week. Oh, so a lot of what you see going on out there is great. I've been working on a number of other issues compared items over the past month here. I guess a little bit before the rain, I just started, I wanted to point this out before the rains kind of started. We're in that drive, we're getting a lot of calls. Concerns over grass growth, the new seed that was put out makes it look better. Stuff that we put in last year, the Apache, it looks quite a bit better now. But I did want to let everyone know that we're not done yet. There are on the other front. It is important seating isn't perfect. Definitely some little areas here and there that aren't going to be one hundred percent resolved. Maybe some people aren't one hundred percent satisfied. But we'll continue.
If it if it stays hot and dry, would or would you look at doing, say, an overseeding in the fall up there for them or?
Well, my my interest right now is to have have tried here all reasonable efforts to make sure we don't have to extend it all the way. We weren't getting any rain before. Leave them some brief messages to make sure they're able to water. During these like hot dry weeks, I heard this yesterday. Number of different things that I got.
I did notice there was a water truck that went up and down Red Wing, gushing the boulevard. I don't know if that was the city or if that was.
That was in contrast. They told us they did that yesterday.
Yeah, that was yesterday. Good to see it. I don't want to say more often, but.
Yeah, I told them during drive, I like the
Yeah.
Well, I believe Tom is the sheriff on Red Wing, so he'll be watching out for us.
Well, I'm not staring out the window all the time.
No, but you're there all the time. You see what's going on. That's good on that part.
So yeah, I guess with that project, action item.
And in that pay request, the retainage, that is that what's being held back to make sure that they get the lawns taken care of?
Yeah. So if you remember back from last year, there's that direction that we have to reduce retainage, retainage down to five percent to one percent.
Yes.
This is standard completion, but there is additional retention taken out.
So that won't get paid until we're satisfied with. Okay. Okay.
Anything else you have to mention on the Red Wing project outside of the pay request? Okay, we need a motion then to for a pay request number nine. And I'll make the motion that we pay the forty one thousand seven hundred ninety six dollars and seventy six cents.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and second for pay request number nine. All of them, all of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Against, ayes win. Okay.
Next on the list is the business park. So A one excavating have been out there for several weeks now, primarily building angle drive. I need a ninety five percent of the sand and gravel. Got a road bed in place here right now. They didn't have her scheduled a couple of weeks ago. We had a couple of some of the materials that's now worked out, so some other cleanup items. That's basically any concerns or questions with that?
Any chance of doing the paving for Redway Avenue and up there at the same time?
But so originally, when you're talking about the end of the month.
Okay.
It doesn't really make a difference.
Whether it come back forth, okay. Okay.
I do have two questions. One is on County Road twelve, you know, where they cut through the through the boulevard itself, County Road. You know, where the man where they cut through to put the the piping in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's a little dip. Are they going to fill that in?
Oh, you're talking about like on the town side.
It dips through there a little bit.
I can have them, I can have them address it.
Yes, it definitely is going to need it. And another question I have is I know at last this last, oh, last week it was, I believe. Seen a city vacuum truck out there. Can you tell me what was going on out there? Looked like they were working on the manhole in the area of Angle Drive.
City truck or was it maybe another contractor? There's a contractor that was out there. They were jetting and jetting out the sewer and sandbags were in storm sewer. Then they halibutize all the lines that were requirement for the they did that. That might have been much.
There was what you're describing, but the truck, I felt quite comfortable at saying as I passed through that it was a city truck or a vacuum truck. I'm not certain on it.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. Normally, man would keep me in the loop on something like that. My my best guess is that it was probably after well, right? I don't even know what the color, maybe they
Well, I did, yeah, pretty much identified, I thought, even with the logo of the city of Kenyon on on the truck itself. And it was white, you know, the whole work. So that's why I was just wondering what was going on.
Yeah, I guess my best guess is
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Question, part of Angle Drive includes a turn lane per se from the highway. I don't remember seeing that being manufactured as we speak, or is that down the road, that part of the highway crew?
No, the turn lane is going to go in the base, the rock faces.
Oh, it is? Okay.
So it'll be as you're driving into town.
It'll be on the right. Okay, will that be?
In place, they just got to do a little
Will they do in the paving of that at the same time as doing? Okay, great, thank you.
So the pay estimate for that project, the pay estimate on the four, the amount goes four thousand.
I motion we pay the estimate number four of the amount of a hundred and four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and sixteen cents.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion been made and second for pay request number four for a hundred and four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and sixteen cents to A one excavating. All of those in favor, say aye of the motion.
Aye.
Against, ayes pass.
The last item here, I just have another quick FEMA fund repairs project. Mercuri side part, I believe you all have a copy. Same scope of work that we've been talking about. Putting in or replacing a couple of culverts down in that area. Grant that the city received from FEMA. Between ninety and so get these plans out contractors here and
Be nice to get that done, obviously, before next spring.
Yeah.
That's obviously the plan.
That's just informative. We don't have Okay.
So Mayor, I I texted both for expect said that that was a contractor hired by A one. The backer trucks generally all kind of look, they do kind of look alike.
Okay.
It's that white, white color. So, yeah.
Okay. Good, thank you. I was just curious if there were, I figured maybe, you know, over the winter that some of the fill had gotten in and, you know, seeped in through. That's the concern that I had was that, you know, is this just a one time problem or something that was going to go on?
Yeah, it's no issue. It's just a matter of putting a camera down in it because I want to see it before they hit the site.
Yeah, okay.
On a number of issues on a Red Wing Avenue.
Yeah.
They're just doing theirs.
Well, that was my concern and thank you, Mark, for checking up. So, okay. Anything else, Derek? Okay. Well, then we can move on to legal and attorney rigs.
Thank you, Mayor. Your first item, the area is the power sales agreement that K M U you've already added in, but the city also enters into this agreement as the entity for the utility. It's a power sale agreement, similar to what you've done for other power sales contracts. We typically have it overruled by the to provide a city health really can lose contract, but ultimately it's a safe contract. I don't have a lot of information beyond that. Well, but it really is a linear power sales first contract for the facility, which less should be, but
Yeah, Southwest sort of.
Yeah, and it's been a contract that was entered by us before. But it's been done because of those done properly, that's really what you're looking at right now. At this point in time, it's a third internal ministerial if there's questions. But it's our part of the power sales package that C M M P A and C M P A S, the other subsidiary of C M M P A we're not, we're wondering, let's just plug your
I'm kind of at a loss, okay? Are we selling them power or are we purchasing power from them? The reason why I'm saying this here is that one time I lived in California and we had some kind of an agreement like that. And the state went ahead with it and it cost them a tremendous amount of money that they're still paying for yet today. The ones that did not go with that program are the beneficiaries of it. So that's why I'm wondering, I'm kind of leery of what's what this all about without knowing more information on it.
Yeah, and it isn't what California has done where you've got reverse contracts going back and forth. We'll regenerate the line event. This is a pure purchase of power for this facility. They actually purchase through C M M P A and C M P A S organization. We get a certain percentage of that power and lights on the grid for that power. So it is not something to point back. It's at a fixed rate for some years. It's part of our package that we have to distribute. It's no different than any contract we have with that solid
So there's K M U has this part of Compass Central Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, which is now this, I think central, they changed their name to Central Municipal Power. And what that is, is a group of, now it's ten cities that basically purchase power together. So Compass has member cities, including Caston, Lewarth, Janesville, Delano, Blanco. There's, there's a few others I can't recall right off the top of my head. Basically, the way that K M U and Compass is set up is we have multiple, we have multiple power contracts. And I would tell you, as long as the day is, that's the only way to go. I was in a city before I came here that had one power contract from one supplier and that was the worst thing ever. You know, it took them a while to get out of that. And this way, we have multiple power contracts. We have several contracts that run seven twenty four through sixty five. We have some that run five days a week. We have some that are backup. We have some to kick on if prices go up a certain level. So we have a very sophisticated level of redundancy to keep the prices as stable as possible. The wind power actually, I think, went down and that's part of the reason that this is being extended. And I don't know the exact kilowatt hour price, but it's it's very reasonable. But obviously, and this is something that's out of our hands, you know, a certain amount of power has to be natural, you know, wind, solar, whatever. So Compass works very, very hard to get these contracts and most of them are wind. We've got two or three wind contracts and those obviously are not twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty five, because wind doesn't always blow. So then you have to have backup. And so they have a very good tiered contract. I can't tell you how I think good it is from municipal parties, because I've been involved with. So they do a very good job of really trying to help all cities keep their power costs stable. Okay, so this is part of that portfolio of contracts. But this actually, I believe, represents a reduction for what they were paying for. So I would strongly recommend, you know, going with it. And the always a difficult thing with the municipal electric utility is the council isn't, you know, except Tom now is the rep on the board, isn't immersed in what is an extremely complicated business because the city owns basically a municipal power, electric power, you know, a utility. So it's very complicated. This consortium, this organization really helps save us because, you know, they have engineers and they have buyers. They have all these people that one city could never hire, but together we can. And, you know, we also have a part of a power line that we do get revenue from that we bought into. So, I mean, there's really different levels that K M U is involved with. And so this is a good example of just one piece of of a pie that has probably seven or eight different parts to it. And it's, you know, I'm I'm lying to you if I don't say it's it's real complicated. It's, you know, for a layperson, even someone like me, it's hard to, you know, really know. I mean, you know how they operate from what you read in a summary, but it's not like we're experts. We're not electrical engineers, but this is a it's a good, I think, a good
Like another cotton machine, like
Yes, yes.
It's another puzzle piece to clarify.
Yeah.
Mark's correct. I mean, without any of this organization, central municipal power, they're city is the size playing on the market for power and having a great time. And that's what you say, it wants us. If you add some convenience or municipal facilities that have one contract sit by max out, if I can put up, or if it is in that area, that's not what you meant. You have multiple purposes, just trying to get the best rate for this contract itself, the members are the twelve members. This contract itself, the members are the twelve members in there, Lewarth, Delano, Fairfax, Blenco, Granite Falls, Kenyon, Pass, and Canyon, Mount Lake, CPI, Springfield, and Wyndham. And out of the hundred percent purchase of being of these twelve cities that are doing, your percentage is three point two percent. There are two other communities in there, three point two percent. The highest is then the seventy-five percent. To empower the hundred percent of the leaders of this community watching this contract, there's three point two percent. No, it isn't a contract of California. You're creating power back and forth. It is purely purchased and this is available power that we can use. But it is extremely complicated and you should have a way of getting somehow. I mean, the CMMPA has to explain that to council, but reality is, it's. CMMPA or Compass are probably saying it out, we change. Doesn't raise my. Another community that has municipal facilities, people like this, very similar things. They usually buy different power and they have had similar purchases as Kenyon. So all of them pick out what they believe is the best, best mix for the community. This is what the decision was made.
And I think the bottom line thing to always remember with municipal power is local control. And, you know, you can always fall back on the three generators that we have in that building next door that if we lose all our power, they, we can run the city on those generators and a lot of places don't have that. So we're, I think, very fortunate to have that capability. But I think that a lot of it really comes down to just the local control. And I think almost every city that has a municipal electrical, you know, utility is in some kind of group.
They don't know.
Yeah, it's just too difficult to operate independently.
No, I, I think without these types of groups working together. No, unless they're a lot of.
But even there.
There is, but they aren't. No, I know, that's what I'm saying. I mean, Weyndham's not a smaller community.
No. If it'd be helpful, you know, we could at some point have a work session and have, you know, Randy and we could have people from Compass come and just talk about how things are structured. There's also an annual meeting that Compass has every year and I encourage you, the council members to go. You know, we've had some go in the past because you don't have a lot of, a lot of the council people go, but it would probably be a good thing. Because they do a really good job of talking about what they do. Things they're going on. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, and again, this is one contract, a number that you already have in place.
Well. For me, you enlightened me a lot and I know that I have a lot of faith in KMU. I do on you, Attorney Rigs, and also you, Mark. And I feel that you will make the best decisions to pass on for the city of Kenyon, so.
And I'll be honest about the agreements I pull up here. There is a agreement between CMMPA, the original name party, and the local entity, and it's a downstream of the CMMPA. Now, with the Yosts, Kenyon, they're not as simple as a contract of two power. We have some, there's some older ones who've done that. What are they doing? Those are couple of. But these ones are in Kenyon range of all. Yeah, there's. That was the grid agreement and that we haven't had to do that. Yeah, this is a very straightforward agreement for a three point two percent purchase of power.
Okay, is there any more discussion that we have on it? We have to make a.
Yep, it did. Thank you.
Yeah. Because I was like, didn't know at all what they were.
Okay.
We have to make a.
Motion on it, yes.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Approve.
To approve the new contract for energy? What is it?
It's resolution.
The, okay, I, I moved to approve the resolution twenty dash ten.
Twenty twenty-one dash ten.
Okay, there's been. Is there something else you wish to say?
No, my being was spoken, remember that I think again. It is twenty twenty-one.
Oh, twenty.
That's, that's.
Twenty twenty-one dash correction.
I caught that one too, but I wasn't gonna say anything. Okay. There's been a motion made and second for resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten. All of those in favor of it, say aye.
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 Opposed. Eyes do win. Or surpassed, so. Okay. Next on it is a CTI tower agreement with Jim Gold. Are you?
Um, go ahead, yeah.
I, I'm looking at the materials, I haven't acted and. What you receive and. Obviously, it's a very complicated situation on these types of power that are out there. We're not sure if there's conditions to be able to tie this power. We've had some questions about whether or not it's only is that covered, I guess. Because we would always have to put up the full, had its own control for those types of things. You also have, I think, this complete cap is a, it's a agreement between some private parties, which unfortunately have full over. We certainly can do with the entity that, that is here that controls it. But we don't have much of a armed twist, in all honesty, at the end of the day, for this. And you're on the trails, you haven't packed. I have not dealt with it that much. Our kit on moving along, but it's important. Concern and then you can tell us what you want to do here. And I haven't gone beyond kind of pushing up in the past. So. We never moved. I can't guarantee that at all because I know there are powers that are up and then.
Do we know how long that tower's been up there? Jim, was it there when you moved in? It was there when I moved in?
I moved here in spring nineteen ninety-eight and it was there. I believe it was perceived the ordinance made up. That part was not a example.
Chief?
Been here since I started.
I think, okay.
Yeah, I started ninety-five, then.
Well, I've got a petition that I signed, I have signed by forty people. Many of them are, live on Gates or Second Street or Manor. Some of them are individual letters and, and all those ones are close neighbors. The ones in the list form, I put a little highlight by the ones that are closest. Their address is on there. They're all residents of Kenyon. And I guess I feel that, and I realize. Pretty makes a shame that it's probably home by huge corporation. I don't know what the relationship of CTI with MediaCom is. But as I mentioned, when I first moved here, it wasn't used. And I asked somebody once, like, what are they using it for? And, and this was maybe fifteen years ago, ten years ago. I don't recall. But at that time, they were just getting channel two. They had an antenna and they were getting channel two that way. And, and I haven't seen an antenna up there for five years. And, and I, I understand. Very busy, there's a lot going on. Why mess with something like this? But it might be an opportunity in the very least to contact CTI and say, I think, lose them this tower. When, when has it last been used? And if they say, well, we use little switching station at the bottom. I would press them and I'd say, show us a record of transmission or reception of electronic signals from the tower. And when did it end? Because it's right in there. Realize the zoning is filled rate where it says operations and facilities, but. I see that the city of Kenyon could make a great case that, hey, tower's not in use. You need to contact us and you need to let us know what your plans are, you know? And, and because we have, we have the opportunity to tell you to take it down. And according to the way I see the zoning code. And. You know, you may ask, well, what good does it do the city to have it down? It might benefit you. And as I mentioned in my letter, that I have an option to buy the property from Todd Barnfine. And he would love to sell it to me because it's virtually. It has very little value to the landowner. Then, when Todd gave, some of you may remember that Barnfine owned, he had a map up there. He, he owned a parcel that was to.
Map.
Just the, just the tower piece and he wanted to.
The land, the land block parcel.
Yeah, right, right. And.
Yep, two seconds.
Get an easement from, from CTI, you know, to come through their piece. So, so he could sell this and the person could have a driveway. And they must have, they must have convinced, hey, why don't you just buy it from us, you know? And then you can have your driveway and we'll just, here's our easement contract, our perpetual easement. And we'll have our tower at business and you pay all the tax. So what you've got is, you got a piece of, you know, commercial zone property in Kenyon. And you've got this tower smack dab in the middle. And you've got these big guy wires, the one to the south goes, you know, pretty close to Councilman Residel's house. And then the one to the west goes way out there. And there's one to the northeast and, and it pretty much. Leaks up the property. You couldn't farm it because you couldn't get a combine under those guy wires. You, you really can't do anything with it, but you are gonna pay the taxes. And it's right in the easement contract that if the landowner doesn't pay the taxes, the easement holder can pay the taxes and force the landholder to pay. So Mr. Barnfine, I feel like it's, it's in between a rock and a hard place. You can't, I don't know what would happen if you tried to just let the property go. I mean, CTI would probably pay the taxes and if they go after him for the taxes, I don't know. But, and so I feel that, you know, Kenyon has an opportunity to say, hey, if you're not using the tower, take it down. You can keep your, you know, you got your switching station or whatever they do there, you know? But if you're not gonna use it, take it down and then, then we can have a, a person, you know, a landholder in Kenyon that's paying the taxes, have a piece of land that has some value. That's all my, my claim and, and if, and, and as Attorney Rigs mentioned, maybe. Supposed to notify us. But you understand that's kind of great.
But part of the, part of the issue we have to look into is trying to figure out when, what, when did the council give them the permission to put this up? Because if it predates the ordinance, and they gave them the right to just build it with.
I didn't understand that.
Then that's a problem because you, you can't, you, yeah, you, you know, we can't, if you build a house and then we pass an ordinance that says you can't build a house that big, we can't go in and tear off part of your house. You're a, you're a, what do they call it? Non-conforming.
Non-conforming use.
Yeah, non-conforming use. So that, that, we have to look at that first, Jim, and see if we even, you know, that, yeah, the ordinance, you're right, it, it's, it's great. But it might not apply to these people.
Well, I, I'd be perfectly willing to do more research to see if I can find out when the tower was in there. And, and also. Try to find out if the, because I, I don't think the city of Kenyon would want to be in a position where. They can have that tower there forever.
But they might be able to.
Right.
Based on what the rules were in place at the time. Yeah, the, the, the law is pretty clear that we can come in and change the rules after, you know. So that, that's gonna be one of the issues that, that we'd have to look at. And if there was an ordinance in place, if there's a conditional use permit out there, and, and there was an ordinance in place, that's a totally different ballgame. But if they just came in to a council meeting and said, can we build a tower? And council said, sure. There were no ground rules put in place. That, then they've got the upper hand. And my guess is there, once they have it up, they're not gonna be too willing to take it down. It, we would have to have the law on our side in order to initiate that. Because usually, once the, once these outfits get a tower up, they don't wanna go through the whole hassle of taking it down and then coming back later and wanting to go through the whole process of putting one back up again. You know, so that, so, so it's an uphill climb. And so that, if we can, if we can find out, first of all, if there was, if this code was in place at the time and the council at that time approved their permit based on this code. That's, that's one thing. Then, then, then we have the law on our side. But if it was just a carte blanche approval, then there's not much we can do.
Would there be any extra?
Boy.
You know, it's like the whole group minutes at the lowest, most granular level. We weren't able to really find a permit for anywhere, like a CUP condition.
Have you talked to the peo-, like, the people that own it? Have you talked to them?
No, I haven't.
Comcast owns it. I've talked to them.
You've talked to them? And what do they, and they're like, not budging? They don't, they don't wanna.
Well, we haven't really laid down the gauntlet to them to say, you know, we want to take it down. What I asked them is if it was being used. And then they called me back and said they were gonna have another department representative call me and they never called me back. I called the guy and left a message, the original guy, so I can go ahead. Heard back and that would have been, been me probably. So I mean, it was, say, a month ago.
Okay.
Last contact I have with them, so.
So Comcast doesn't own this land, but they own the tower that's on the land.
Yeah.
And they don't pay a, a usage charge or anything for putting, having this tower on the land.
Well, Barnfine pays property tax on the land. And the land is valued based on whatever they value whatever the tower on. So it does pay, you know, property tax.
Yeah. But, I mean, Comcast doesn't pay Barnfine.
No.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
I mean, if, because, I mean, I'm just trying to think of a way, like, I mean, if you could talk to them and they don't care about the tower. I mean, maybe they wouldn't want to take it down, but maybe you could hire somebody to take it down. You know what I mean? I mean, I'm sure it'd be a billion dollars. I don't know what that costs, but.
Yeah, I don't know how bad it would be. I think the biggest thing is safely, you know, I don't know if you have to go off the piece of apart, take it apart. I don't know how that would be for sale.
You know, if they're not using it and they don't really, you know. I mean, I can see them not wanting to send someone out and them paying to take it down.
And depending on why it's something used, maybe not to be aimed at.
Looks like it wasn't there in nineteen eighty. Okay, so when it's something between eighty and ninety, I wonder when that part of the ordinance was adopted.
Yeah, I know, it didn't help.
Okay, so that.
I lost it with something in the old folder. I can, I can try to look that up.
Okay.
I'll see if I can find something in the old folder. I, most cities didn't have a telephone.
No. No.
That was, yeah, they didn't, and I know we did. Uh, we used model completely with some food, uh, to, uh.
And originally that tower, was that tower to bring in more than just Channel Two?
I, it may have been. I, I don't know.
I know that was, that was, uh, Yeah.
Yeah. So the city might have been very happy at that time saying, you know, wow, cable TV for a resident. You can do whatever you want up there.
Yeah.
That's what I'm worried is probably the case, but if we can, so if we can find out the, if we can narrow it down to the year, then I guess it's a matter of going through the minutes and seeing what, seeing what's there.
Yeah, I guess the key thing is gonna be, was there any requirements? I guess gotta keep a look into that, but, you know, in the eighties or whenever that was passed. Cause if there wasn't, like you were saying, that there may not be much the city could do.
Yeah.
Ask them if we could directly, we could send them a letter. I just feel like this becomes a, you know, an expensive legal kind of undertaking for, with a small town to try to get them to do this. And they're a huge.
If we don't have the law on our side, then I don't think we can. You know, it's like I say, it's the same thing as, you know, well, we don't want, we don't want big houses anymore. Well, I have a big, you can't come in and make me tear off half my house. It was approved before. You change your rules later. That's, you go forward with those rules. And that's, you know, and that, that's all, you know, that's land use in, in every, you know? Yeah, that's, so there's, there, so I think we need to figure out, first of all, what was the wording of either the permit or agreement or who knows what it was? And if we don't have the law on our side, I think the most we can do is, um, send them an official letter from the city asking if they would be, you know, uh, if, if they'd be willing to take it down. And if they don't, if they don't respond, then, then there's, you know?
There's two things we can look for in this, uh, kind of, uh, their points out in nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety. One, our, over the, pretty, we have, since, uh, we talked about the top of the year two. The other would be the existence of, right? Whatever entity it was, but that's, that's the worries with the, with the fact.
Sure.
Um, we changed our franchise in late nineties, so.
Triax.
Yeah.
We're going to Triax.
Yeah, we're in Triax.
But I don't know if we would have covered this tower or not. I'm not really sure about that.
Typically, the, the older ones have, where you, they have the site and they're in or wherever it's located.
Yeah.
Signal is coming in, um, I'll check the code, uh, we should have, we'd like to have the Triax. Somewhere there, we'll have to get the, um, those are the two things we're gonna find.
Yeah, we probably have it somewhere. But you could check the ordinance department and see if there's any.
Cause in the old codebook, there's probably a Triax.
Yeah.
Well, I really appreciate your time.
I hope you're patient, Jim. This, we gotta dig thirty plus years back to find information. This might be a,
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh,
Doug.
Well, maybe it's obsolete.
Yeah.
Dan.
Is this for the council?
I think so, yep.
Thank you, Jim. Oh, we can go on with, uh, old business then? Is there anything else that you have, uh, Scott, to set in? Okay, we can go on with the old business then. Update on, uh, Mayo Health Systems Mobile Clinic. Is there something or are we passed on that already?
Well, I don't think there's any other information. I had it on the agenda from the last couple of meetings, you know, because we were continuing to follow this issue. So I think, you know, you have the update under presentations unless there's any other question. I guess I don't have anything else.
I think it was pretty well covered. So if there isn't, then we'll, uh, move on to, uh, new business. Um, an interesting one is immunity break-in. Um, who are we gonna have? Bellasen.
Liquor store manager, Matt Bartel, just waiting patiently. Hello, everyone.
Melty.
So, as you have all heard, uh, Saturday, May twenty ninth, early in the morning, we got broken into. Uh, they came in through the window on the east side of the building. At six thirty in the morning in broad daylight. Spent about three minutes inside destroying the free pull tab machines. Took the cash holders out of those and went back out the window. Um, went through tapes. I phoned, the first time I saw them on the tape was at three forty-five in the morning. Walking through the alley, looking around. Uh, they came back through again at four oh seven and then four oh nine, and four oh nine, they spent a little time behind Napa. They came back at four forty, grabbed a pallet from behind Napa, used this ladder to climb up on the side of my building and cut my phone and internet lines. And that time took, uh, pride, what appeared to be a pry bar or flat iron around to the east side of the building, which was at that time sheltered by the taco wagon. So they were kinda hidden behind the taco wagon there. Uh, used it to pry, didn't break the glass in the window, but broke the hardware in the window, allowing it to pop the window open. Um, pulled the window open, disappeared again then until six thirty in the morning. In broad daylight, the sun is out, everything is out. Came back at six thirty in the morning, came in through that window on the side of the building. Went through the three pull tab machines, like I say, in about three minutes, it was less than four minutes. And they were back out the window and then disappeared. I got a call from Lee that Saturday morning. I was actually on my boat. I'd only gotten the weekend away myself and I were fishing. So we got, got the call from Lee. Um, I called W H, right Henepin, uh, W H Security. Asked them why my phone line and cable line, I was under the impression that if they were cut, that they would get some sort of notification. They said that that is not the plan I have. So I actually have here, and I didn't get it in time to get it in your packet, but I do have here. Um, this is the estimate to come install what we need to have cellular monitoring. So if they cut our phone line, any of that, we will still have a, a signal that will send to W A Security. Uh, the cost is five hundred and forty dollars to install this stuff. I discussed with Mark and I don't think it's an option to not have in this day and age, this sort of technology. So we have approved it, um, it will add sixteen fifty to our monthly bill, which is approximately twenty-four dollars and change right now. So the initial cost of five hundred and forty dollars in the security system is the only significant expense. Like I said, I think that is money well spent and I can take a look at that. I only brought one copy. I should have brought one for everyone. I also, and they are coming tomorrow morning to assess that. It's about eight thirty tomorrow morning to start assessing. I also talked to them about maybe upgrading some of our cameras. We have a couple newer cameras. I've been adding cameras since I've been managing the place. Uh, newer cameras are obviously much better than the old analog. And, and looking at some of the other businesses' cameras that have just put them up in the last year to try and find footage on this, I realized that theirs are even light years ahead of my newer stuff. Um, so I talked to them about upgrading our cameras, you know, the analog, the I P cameras. And he said, like, the analog ones I got are like one point two million pixels where the new ones are over four. So it will gain a whole lot of camera quality too, and going back and looking at this. Uh, he does not have a quote to me, um, replacing these cameras and upgrading them. But like I say, I think this is something that just has to be done after something like this happens. We have a claim into League Minnesota Cities for insurance. Everything that was damaged, they didn't go after, you know? I, my first ambition is they're back there grabbing bottles of booze and grabbing cigarettes and all of this. All they did is they came in the window, hit the pull tab machine and back out the window. So they damaged the pull tab machines, which are insured by the still drinkers. They took the money out of those pull tab machines, which there's some debate now on how insurance is going to cover that. They broke that window, broke the E on sign and Frontier had to come repair our phone and internet lines. We haven't gotten the bill from them with that across that. But realistically, it could have been much worse. Um, Lee has some footage of the guy and just kinda shopping around. I saw some of it. It's not someone I recognize as being one of our everyday or even somewhat regular people. It's no one I recognize. Which when I first got the call, I started, oh, I bet it's this guy. I bet it's this guy. So once I saw the footage, I, you know, was at least relieved that, okay, it's not someone who spends a lot of time in here, but yet it's frustrating just.
So it was one person?
It was one person alone and it was the same person, like I say, from three forty-five in the morning, when I first saw him on camera walk through the alley till six thirty. So they spent almost three hours circling the building to go inside and hit us for three minutes. So I think it's probably not your local guys ripping up the, the ditches with four wheelers and stealing LP tanks. I think this guy's at a little different level than those guys, but.
Have you heard of any other, uh, bars in Minnesota with this kind of?
I have not, but I looked at the camera behind Napa and the guy was back there peeking in their back door and looking at their wiring where their wiring comes into the building. And I have heard through the grapevine that one other business had their phone line cut that same weekend, but that is not out there, you know, publicly being talked about, so I'm not gonna discuss that right now, but I just know that one other business.
This guy must have known something about what he was doing to, I mean, I wouldn't know where to begin with a pull tab machine.
And that's, that's what Lee and I discussed is, uh, you know, I think most people's first instinct would be to bust the glass and try and go from there, whereas this guy, no, he went in, he had a pry bar right at the first machine and even he went down the line, busting all the doors open and then came back taking the cash holders out. You know, it's not like he busted it open, grabbed the cash holder. It was like he had, he had a system. You know, so I would assume that if his video was shared to other law enforcement agencies and stuff like that, that I would assume at some point in this guy's recent history, a cop somewhere has dealt with him and will hopefully recognize him. But, you see, I, I've seen, you know, stuff of it and I don't wanna say too much because I believe, you know, we've got an investigation going on and I don't wanna all of a sudden spill a bunch of stuff to the public that maybe he doesn't want the public to know yet.
Matt, we pay the bail each month. What are we getting for that?
Um, well.
I mean, before now, all of a sudden, we're gonna upgrade for sixteen dollars and fifty cents. What are they doing? What, what's this thing about?
Right now is if the phone line hadn't been cut, if some, if any of our doors open, they've all got sensors on them. So if a door opens, it will set off an alarm that will result in me getting a call, Lee getting a call, all, you know, any of that. It also has motion sensors in the building. So if someone were to say hide in the bathroom or in somewhere and then come out of the bathroom after hours, it would set off a motion sensor, it would then trigger an alarm that would go to the response center. And all of, but all of that is apparently dependent on the phone line, which I assumed we were beyond that. And I guess it's one thing I have never looked into is the redundancy of it. When I asked my rep about it, he told me that like some of the other city buildings are already upgraded to this and somehow we got lost in the shuffle.
That's exactly what I was gonna ask. It's kinda like, uh, like a rancher building a big fence and putting his cows in, forgetting to put the gate up, you know? That's the thing that I see. Why didn't they, you know, this is a security outfit company. They're supposed to be in the know. Well, shouldn't have they known that or shouldn't have they come and said, you know, we're here for your security. You, this is what I suggest you update too. And now they want us to come back and do it?
Yeah.
I don't know. I think I'd look at a different company.
And we can do that. I just, uh, like I say, I don't know who's out there for companies that has this sort of monitoring. I guess I could start shopping around. Um, I know that this company has been in place for longer than I have been at the Muni. I started there part-time in two thousand and ten, took over managing in two thousand and thirteen. And I know this has been the company that I believe does all of the city stuff previous to that. I don't know, maybe you know a little more on that.
Well, I, W H's, or is it W H or?
Yeah, W H.
I mean, they, the other company that the city's worked with that's similar to W H's, Custom Alarm in Rochester. Custom Alarm is a good company, but you know, they're pretty expensive. And this whole age of that system and the redundancy of the wiring, we didn't realize obviously until this guy broke in, we would have, you know, had a different type of system in there, I guess. But, yeah, it's, you know, Custom Alarm, I get, we can get a quote from them. I just, I tend to think they're gonna be a lot more expensive. We use W H or right head up for our cameras in the building, you know, the police departments. And they've done a, a good job, you know? So I, I don't know what to say to that.
But the other thing too is, you know, that this guy was obviously sophisticated. You would, our alarm system would have been fine for just, you know, some,
Majority.
Some, someone who didn't know any better and was desperate and, you know?
This guy knew alarm systems and he knew the workings of the pull tab.
Yeah. So there's, there's, the, the one silver lining here is we, we can take away some, um, some lessons, you know, and, and I think one of them is, yeah, we definitely have to have that, um, security system that upgrades so that, uh, if the phone line gets cut, um, they're still aware of that something, something bad is going down.
And I would assume that's why he cut the phone line at four forty and,
Went to see.
Broke the window at four forty and in the process, you know, knocked a couple signage down into the building and then disappeared for two hours, I would assume, just to see if there was any response to that initial event.
Yeah.
So if there would have been response to that initial event, we would have had the damage, but he would have not gotten in the building. But I think he, that's, I'm assuming why he disappeared for almost two hours was just to lay in wait and just see if there is response to that happening. So like I say, I think this is, it's not your local, uh,
Hooligan.
Local hooligan.
Yeah.
But yeah, who's just, uh, I think this guy, probably this isn't his first role.
I don't have a problem with what went on. My issue is with that alarm company that, uh, you know, we put our confidence in them and they should be bringing forth different ideas. Now all of a sudden they say you should upgrade. This is the thing that I'm upset about is that we put the confidence into them. We paid them faithfully every single month and then, well, you should have done this here. You know, the, I, I'm just not happy with it.
Yep, I understand that.
I would like, for myself, I know I got, uh, a chip on my shoulder at this moment, but I would like you to go and pursue at looking at some different bids of, uh, different companies and bring up high tech, something that they're gonna keep us going and bring us up to date on a regular basis.
Okay, so.
That's my opinion.
So I got the email from this guy on the quote, which needed a signature. I had forwarded it to Mark. We discussed it and decided to sign that and move forward. But I can email these guys after this meeting, tell them to hold off and not come tomorrow, then, uh, try and find some other quotes.
Yeah, we already, the thing is, we already authorized this to be updated because we didn't wanna be caught again with that cut. So the, the natural thing to tell them was to, you know, upgrade this. Now, so I guess you, yeah, you can call them or I'll see if they can hold off on it.
Yeah, they said between eight and nine, so I will, I will email the guy tonight or text the guy tonight and see if I can stop the wheels from going into motion.
Well, first of all, there are other council members here and I would like their opinion as to what they. Well, first of all, there are other council members here and I would like their opinion as to what they feel they wanna do. So I'm asking each and every one of you, council members.
Well, I.
Do you wanna hold up or do you want?
This is the same security unit that does the police department and I mean, it'd be nice to have.
Everyone under one umbrella.
Yeah.
Well, I understand what you're saying, like why you're mad, but maybe that's just something you bring up to, I mean, I, I think it's good to have it done quickly.
Yeah, it's the other problem. We're in a public meeting announcing we might have a security system in place for a month.
So I would, I mean, but I would just maybe, you know, tell them, be like, the council is not happy. Because you should have done, you know, maybe. I don't know. You know, I mean, they're a company. If there's something that everybody uses, I mean, they need to know too, like that they screwed up.
They, I definitely made them aware that I was not happy.
Okay.
They are, they are fully aware that I was not happy.
Right, cuz you were like, I thought I had this and now I don't and now this happened and. And they're kinda like, oh, you fell through the cracks.
Yeah, that's just kinda.
Maybe they should give you a discount.
Well.
You should see when you get a better.
The operates are, I just. I just know I called them that day. That Saturday of Memorial Weekend, talked to the on-call guy. And he, you know, kinda discussed things with me. Hey, and talked to the service guy and. Then he told me, this is. This is what happened and this is what we need to do.
Okay.
This is going forward, so. My course was like, well. He emailed me all of the information, the price quotes and all this.
I do agree with you, Mayor, that they, the, the security outfit, they're, they're the ones that should be. You know, relaying to you and saying, hey, just so you know. We're seeing this now where people are cutting wires and getting in that way if you wanna up. You know, they, they were not proactive on that part. Um, but the agreement that you have with them, is it a, is it annual? With the security agreement?
I don't even know that it's the same one that's been in place since I started, so I would just probably not locked into a contract.
What I'd recommend is we need, let, let's do this not so rashly, let, let, we need to get the security in first. Let's get that in, move forward and then once we have a, everything's up and running, we can start looking at. What our other options are. That way it's a smooth transition. We can, if we do go with another security outfit. They can be up and running the same day we decide to sever ties with this company if we decide to do that.
So, and the thing is, I think the work that they're gonna do. Switch over to another company. If they're gonna run a phone line or redundant second. Line in there, that's gonna stay in the building. So if another company comes in, they can, they'll be able to use that, so. I don't think that this work is gonna go, you know, if a new company comes in, it's all gotta be rewired. I don't believe that's gonna be the case, so. I think. You know, this is why we wanted to move on this quickly because of this break in. I think it's better to look at other options, you know, bigger picture. Down the road later this year, whatever, and get other quotes. We could certainly do that. Uh, the one thing to keep in mind is WH does all of the security cameras and everything. We're dealing with one vendor for that, which is. A lot more efficient than, you know, dealing with different companies on, you know, different systems, but. We certainly could get a quote from Custom Alarm or whoever else we have. That might do commercial arms. You know, the area.
And you answered or asked all the questions that I was gonna ask. Thank you very much for it. Um, and I'm satisfied with it as to what he stated and, uh, Mark has stated, the rest of you is get it fixed. But look at some quotes.
And maybe for the whole city campus, look at, you know, the, uh. Just because we've had these, this company for so many years, doesn't mean we have to continue to have them for.
Yeah, we can still.
Yeah.
Do that and they can provide the same, you know, monitoring. I mean, the cameras are. Pretty well set there, you know, an internal system, so. That part of it may not matter, you know, if we switch or not. Because it's just the DVR, their records. And then a bunch of cameras that feed into it, so it's not an alarm, it's not monitored all the time. And so that part of it probably doesn't matter. It's more the alarms that. Where we've got more leeway to look at other vendors. I mean, the cameras we purchased and that's that. And if we add cameras, we could add, see if other companies can add them. And still feed into our DVR system, which I assume they can, I think that's pretty.
Any more things that you have to?
I think that is, uh.
One other thing is, um, the window, so they didn't actually shatter the windows. He popped the frame. So is there a way to reinforce those?
Well, he damaged the hardware, you know, nothing else. Um. As of right now. There are. It's not like you can see it, but like inside the window, we have screws and just pulling the window shut until L and M can come and. Look and then, yes, when we get them there, that will maybe be the thing is, okay. How do we make this so that it isn't just ugly and, you know. Short of bars on the windows. We don't, we don't wanna be that, but how can we make this so that it's much tougher for someone to pry open?
Yeah.
Without making it. Totally just.
No, I hear you there. Yep.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last on the list here. Is approved. Revised job description and update of police chief hiring. Mark, are you following in on that?
Yeah, so. Um, we have been advertising for police chief. Chief Scholander will be retiring in August. Just as an update, the city has received sixteen applications through Indeed, which is an online job. Service, one of the places that we, it's one of the places we have a post it. And, um, so. The closing date is June twenty-third, but it's a soft closing day, which means, well, we can take applications after that. Um, and I did make some updates to the. Uh, job description, which you have. The packet, which are italicized. Uh, there's really not a, you know, they're not huge changes, but there was some. Language that covers community policing added, you know, there were some changes to. The job, you know, the physical job requirement part of it that was cleaned up a lot. Um, so those were the main changes that were made. Questions on any of that?
I read what was before and after what Mark, um, had made changes with, you know, suggestions and that, and I did feel that, um. He made a good decision on it.
It looked reasonable to me too. Do you need approval of that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll move approval of the updated, uh, police chief. Uh, job. Qualifications or what it, description, job description.
A second bet.
Okay, a motion has been made and second to approve revised. Job description and update of police chief hiring. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against. Motion passes. I don't believe there's anything else that we have outside of other business. Which is, uh, scheduled upcoming meetings. There's KMU meeting will be Tuesday. June the fifteenth at two PM. Our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, July the thirteenth at seven PM. So with that, we can go to council and staff general comments. And we will start with, uh, your attorney Riggs. Thank you. How about you, Derek? Mark?
Um, nothing there.
Nothing for me, thank you.
We'll pass on it to yourself, right?
Um, nothing here.
And how about you, Dan?
Uh, I just, Chief, did you wanna say anything from the citizen comments at the beginning? They kinda like, they would. You know, the, you, you didn't get an opportunity to respond. I don't know if you want to or not, but I just wondered if you, you know.
I would just like to point out that. We have a lot of tasks to do. And I'd like to think that when I tell somebody to stop doing something, they would listen to me. But look at the current climate that we're living in. So I can't be everywhere at once. I can't stop every ATV. We're trying what, what we can do. We've tried to mediate a bunch of stuff and I truly am boots on the ground around here. There are a lot of things that go on that you don't know about. So to hear this today was a little personal, which, which I get. Um, but we are trying the best we can. But help, yesterday was having another officer in town from another agency. I could be on one side of town, he was on the other. We got both ATVs stopped. I took a verbal lashing that you would not even wanna hear yesterday. I had citizens coming out, giving me praises for standing there and taking this and not doing anything in retaliation. So we're doing the best we can. And that's all I really gotta say about that.
I guess, I know we're being done, but is there anything that we, we can do? I mean, as a councilman, I don't really, I know he's here telling us, but I don't really know. I just, you know, I'm new. I don't really know. What we can do. I mean, it's.
So.
Yeah.
What happened a lot is, uh, Mr. Retschko's got a situation. I show up, I try to first of all, say, well, you stop doing this, whatever, whatever. Yeah, no, whatever, okay. If that doesn't work, we come back again, start talking about other options. Let's say write him a citation. Maybe you haven't heard this either, but our courts are super backlogged and no offense. Their level of caring about a lot of this, what we might consider big stuff, but it's really Italy stuff, is not a big deal to them.
Right, goes in the back.
So Mr. Retschko shows up and says, I'm really sorry about this, but here's why it happened. Think of, okay, well, go upstairs and pay court costs and have a nice day. So we don't get any fine revenue. I think some people think that I write Mr. Riggs a ticket, he pays his ticket, we get all this windfall of money that comes in. And that's how we pay or line our coffers. It does not work that way.
Right.
And I've offered all of you the opportunity to come in and spend time with me and we can go through all this stuff during like one of your work sessions. Please, let's do that. Cuz there's things that go on that you don't know, that the public doesn't know. And I would love to be able to panhold and tell them everything that goes on, but I'm only one person, so. We're trying to mediate these situations. I thought we had something in place with this gentleman repairing, Mr. Marion Saad. If he chooses not to do that, he's a grown adult. He wants to go to court and get a huge fine and have to pay restitution. That's a possibility. It might happen, it might not. That's on him, not me. And the courts are gonna say, Chief Lee, you really tried a lot to get this guy to mediate. That's what happened. Nothing, he didn't show up, so. I mean, we as a society right now are not listening to one another. I can't get people to move cars because it's a big deal for some reason. You know, we are getting pushed back a lot and this is a great town. People here are wonderful. I love living here and working. But it's not like maybe you think it is, where I show up and say, move it and you move it. It doesn't work that way. It's super frustrating.
No, I watched you get yelled at by crazy people. I know.
Yeah, and I, and I, I don't mind it. It's part of this job and I realize that a lot of it is the heat of the moment. And I'm seeing this person like a small sliver of their, their day. It's a small fraction of what's going on with them. But I'm telling you, I'm here every day, boots on the ground. I don't think it's about families that nobody here knows. So if I don't get someone a citation, it's not that I'm soft or weak. It's maybe I know that they don't have any money. They don't have a car cuz their car was repelled. They don't have a job. They have a, a health concern that's going on. There are things that I know that you don't know. And I'm not bragging, I'm not saying it's wonderful. I'm just telling you that I'm not soft. We do what we can do with what we can do. I'm sitting on an ATV. I'd love to get my tow bill paid, but I gave them a break by putting it in our garage, so they're not getting an impound. I do things from the heart, not from the law book. And that's the way it is. And the new chief, it better be the same way or it's not gonna work.
Yep.
Anything you have questions on?
No, I just thought you had, uh, you should have the opportunity to, to comment on that and I think it's. You know, the, what a lot of people don't understand sometimes, there's, there's two parts of the law. There's the law enforcement side and then there's the court side of it, so there's. You can do all the things, you know, that, that you can do and then it. Heads down into the court system and like you say, um, when they've got. Big. Big issues that they're dealing with and they're also strapped. Uh, some of the smaller things just aren't gonna, and unfortunately I think there, there are people out there who. Have discovered that and are exploiting that. And there are people who, oh, I can, I can get away with this because, you know, they're, all they're gonna do is just. If, even if I go to Red Wing, they'll just give me a little slap on the hand anyway. And unfortunately, um. You know, we, we need to do a better job of being better neighbors to each other and, and it's, some just aren't.
There's the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. And right now, we as a society, in my opinion, are not following either one. And it's because I show up and tell you not to do something, now it seems to be a deal and it's kind of the way it is with everybody. Or if I come in front of Mary's business and I park my car there and she comes out and asks me to move it, I would be shocked. If I, if the person said, oh, I'm sorry, you got their car moved. Now it seems like everything seems to be a confrontation. And it's sad, but, and it will get, get better. I don't, I'm trying to be a Debbie Dollar here, I'm not, but it's a little frustrating to hear these things and go, well. I'm taking phone calls on my days off. I'm mediating things on my time off and again, I'm not bragging or complaining. I'm telling you that we go way above and beyond here. Way above and beyond. On a daily basis. And we'll get through this. Sitting on an ATV, the other one's gone. Uh, the person from yesterday called and apologized profusely today. That was nice to hear. I thank them for that. You know, it's people being people. We are dealing with people at their best and at their worst. It's not easy. And unfortunately, it's not going to get any easier for quite some time, but it will change. I'm optimistic. It will be fine.
Thank.
Questions?
Chief, I know that you. Had a lot of verbal abuse yesterday. I heard it myself. On, and I'm sorry for it. And all of that, and I know you understand too, but you know, sometimes what you say, the spirit of the law, back and forth on it. Is how much leniency do you give these individuals? You know, we all learn from the very beginning. If we're out there racing around with our dad's car. We parked it in the garage and we wore tennis shoes out. And some of these times, we've got too many of them. We had people in here tonight. They were, been upset for a couple of years already and it just keeps going over and over. I'm not blaming you for it. But I know it's a system. But we have got to get this under control. If you look at some of the items that come out on this concerned citizens, they're on there. All the police department will let us go. We don't need that kind of a, of a deal. It gets out and people say, okay, we're gonna continue on with it. Because of that. So this is why I'm asking. For two things is one. Speak softly, but carry a big stick and use it. And number two is we're coming up on budget and you and Mark both know that I have talked about this here. About getting some more full-time officers on patrol here twenty-four, seven. Budget is coming up and I'm bringing it up and I'm telling the rest of the councilmen right now, this is what I'm looking at, is bringing on two more officers at least.
Good luck filling those positions.
What's that?
Good luck filling those positions. You're losing cops. Officers are quitting in droves. I would love to get officers now. I'm short-handed the way it is.
Thank, thank you, Lee. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Well, that was interesting. Any more comments that somebody has? If not, we'll have adjournment. Need a motion on it?
I'm motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 it's passed.
You know, just damn fine. Hey, this floor repair thing, are you looking for people to fill this in? Hey.
Yeah, that's gonna go out. Derek's gonna get.
Oh, I was gonna, if you handed him a dust, saying, know of anybody? Huh?
Are you volunteering?
No. Well, I mean.